Thank you for coming this evening. It's Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. It's 6:45, and this is the regular meeting of the Cupertino City Council. So, the meeting is called to order, and if you can stand, please do so, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, we're ready for the oral call.
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fruein.
Here.
Mayor Mohan.
Here.
Under medical advisement, Councilmember Wei will not be attending tonight's meeting.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, is there a closed session report?
Need a report, Mayor.
Okay. All right, we're moving on. The ceremonial items is next on the agenda, and it gives me great pleasure to recognize the Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. So, this is the second week of October, and this is when it is recognized as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. So, during tonight's city council meeting, I'd like to take a moment to recognize a very important group of unsung heroes who work tirelessly behind the scenes to maintain the quality of life that we all enjoy here in Cupertino. Beginning on October 7th, we join cities across the nation in celebrating Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. We dedicate this time to recognizing the critical role that code enforcement officers play in ensuring our community remains safe, clean, and compliant. From ensuring that businesses operate within regulations to addressing blight, abandoned vehicles, and dangerous structures, the work of our code enforcement officers is vital. Their work often goes unnoticed, but it's instrumental in maintaining quality and safety of our Cupertino. On behalf of the city council and the residents of Cupertino, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to our code enforcement officers. We are deeply grateful for the work you do to keep our community safe, healthy, and beautiful. I'm told that no code enforcement officers were going to show up today, but we have Director Benjamin Foo, Director of Community Development. Do you want to say a few words, Director?
I will. Thank you, Mayor, for those kind words, and we're humbled, and I accept on behalf of our team the honor and the recognition. Appreciate that. Just a quick shout out for the team, Monica, Jeff, Curran, and Dan, for everything that you've said that they put in to ensure that the city is safe, and all their work is indeed behind the scenes. So, we're honored and we're humbled. Thank you very much.
Great, and thank you, and please communicate our appreciation to each of them.
Okay, so now we have presentations from three different commissions, and we will start
off with the annual report of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Just to remind everyone that after these reports, this is an opportunity for each commissioner to talk about the good work that they've done so far, and if we have any brief comments that we can make to the commissioners, we can do so, but we're not going into too deep into Parks and Recreation Commission work. So, go ahead, please, John Fisher.
Great. Well, I'm hoping that the slides will be put up, and then I can start. Great. Good evening, council members. Thank you for hearing our report from the Parks and Rec Commission. Next slide, please.
Just one moment, sorry.
So, here is our Parks and Rec Commission, and as you can see, we do have another commissioner here, Commissioner Bono with us this evening, but there are five of us. And then, next slide, please. Now, I'm not going to read this giant, this giant eye chart that we have here, but mainly, we advise the city council, as you know, on activities related to parks and recreation, including park site acquisition, development, recreation program policy, and expansion of the park program. Our meetings are held at 7:00 PM the first Thursday of the month at Quinlan Community Center in the Justice Conference Room. So, I don't know what the room is called. Next slide, please. So, here's a brief overview of what's happened in the last year. In March of this year, we recommended that the council approve the Memorial Park specific plan and to also approve the addendum initial study mitigated negative declaration as well. One of the things that came up was that we had requested that in the final design, that there are two bocce ball courts versus one, because that is what the seniors tend to use right now at Blackberry Farm. So, we'd like to have that in the final design. In April of this year, we made recommendations to city council to fund a total amount of $32,500 to various organizations through the community funding grant program for 2024, 2025. The organizations that we recommended, to which ultimately you guys did decide to award grants to, are the Cupertino Symphonic Band, Cupertino Little League, West Valley Community Services, ANAC, STEM Boost, and the Rotary Club of Cupertino. I won't go into each of their projects, but if you're interested, I can tell you what they are at the end of this. In June of this year, we made recommendations to the city council to approve the Lawrence Mitty Park and the final conceptual design, and recommended adoption, again, of the initial study mitigated negative declaration. We received the annual Cupertino Historical Society report in August, and of course, throughout the year, we reviewed all the departmental programs at various commission meetings. The programs include things such as summer recreational programs, Blackberry Farm, and senior programs, so quite a bit. This year, as part of these updates from all the departments, I asked that we start to take a look at what changed year over year. I think a lot of our residents are very interested in this information about what's changing from year to year, but also, it will allow our commission to look at potential work plan items in the future, based on where we're seeing changes in our city. We all know that lots of things changed after COVID, and this is one way to track those changes. So, next slide, please. So, what we plan on doing, like every year, we're going to spend a significant amount of time on our community funding grant applications, and this is early in our year in March and April. The community funding grant program is our largest task of the year. Organizations that wish to receive a grant come to our meeting in April, not only give us a short presentation, but also, we can ask questions of them, et cetera. We then score the organizations using a previously designed rubric, and our April meeting is where we discuss all the various organizations we're going to recommend to council for grant funding, and how much funding that we are going to recommend that they receive. We will also, throughout the year, receive updates on the Parks and Rec capital equipment, projects as needed, ongoing programs such as the playground equipment refreshes, and park amenities will likely be discussed at future meetings. In August, of course, we're again going to receive the Historical Society annual report, and we'll continue reviewing departmental programs throughout the year. That's the end. Thank you so much. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Thank you for your presentation.
Great. Thank you so much.
The Teen Commission?
I will wait for the slides to be queued up.
Okay, they should be appearing momentarily.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Mohan, Vice Mayor Fruein, and council members. Thank you so much for having me here. My name is Shivika Biswari, and I am the current Chair of the Teen Commission. Next slide. So, who are we as the Teen Commission? Well, like I mentioned before, my name is Shivika Biswari, and I am the Chair. Our Vice Chair is Peter Chen, and our other commissioners are Anika Mukherjee, Rohan Garg, Anushree Mishra, Chelsea Lau, Harley Liu, and Brianna Su. Our staff liaison is Sanya Lee. Next slide. To go more into depth on how the Teen Commission is structured and how people can apply, the Teen Commission is a commission consisted of nine students, and the students must be attending school within city limits, but it is completely fine if they're not in that limit as well. They must be attending through grades eight through 11th. One thing to note is that the commissioners must represent the broadest possible representation of Cupertino youth, and we also serve two-year stagger terms. According to the municipal code, the Cupertino Teen Commissioners advise city council and staff on city programs and events. Additionally, we may perform any tasks that are expressly requested by city council. Next slide. So, here's a brief look on what we have accomplished as a commission. We have participated in various events and programs as speakers, moderators, judges, and masters of ceremony. Some examples of this would include emceeing for the Monster Mash's costume parade, moderating and judging the youth spelling bee, emceeing the Big Bunny 5K, or speaking at an intergenerational event. We have also received countless presentations and given feedback on city programs. In fact, our feedback, as a commission, helped to shape a new event, the Teen Resource Fair. For this event, we worked with the teen coordinator and gave feedback on a previous mental health resource event and the City of Cupertino Summer Job Fair. Through this event, we were able to connect with teens in the community and tell them about what the Teen Commission does. Next slide. But as a commission, we don't plan on stopping there. We plan to continue our roles as speakers, moderators, and judges in the community. In fact, we already have commissioners slated to participate in the Pizza and Politics event and also emcee for the Monster Mash costume parade. We will also continue to receive presentations from youth-led organizations and see how we can share their resources to the community. Additionally, we will also continue to give feedback on teen programs in the city, such as the Youth Activity Board, the Leaders and Training Program, and the new Recreation Event Volunteers Program. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Shivika. I want to commend your commission. The volunteers from your commission are everywhere at every public event that's staged in Cupertino, so congratulations and thank you.
Thank you so much.
The Public Safety Commission?
Thank you. Thank you to the mayor, vice mayor, and city council members. We're pleased to present our public safety information.
Can you speak into your mic? Excuse me, Bobby? If you could speak into...
Sorry. If we can have our slides up, please. First of all, we're a pretty new public safety commission. I probably have the seniority, having started last year, and the rest of my fellow commissioners have begun earlier this year. We have an opening that we plan to fill in early next year. So, I'm the Chair, Bobby Tode. Siddharth Rajaram is our Vice Chair, Nirmalendu Das, and Neil Evans are our commissioners. Next slide. What we do, according to the municipal code, our duties and responsibilities of the Public Safety Commission shall be to act in advisory capacity to the city council in all matters pertaining to safety, traffic, police, fire, and other areas, hold hearings and formulate policies, and perform other tasks as may be expressly requested by the city council. Next slide. What we have done, we have suggested past topics for the Public Safety Forum, which will be upcoming. We review data reports from the Santa Clara Fire and Santa Clara Sheriff's Department, and of course, we ask questions and delve into some of the data. We recently reviewed and made recommendations for major planning initiatives, including the automated license plate reader draft policy and the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, which will be presented to the council later tonight. Next slide. What we plan to do, so we will continue to work with the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department to review their reports, and we are advisory for emergency planning and exercise. In fact, later next month, we will have a planning exercise that OEM, Office of Emergency Management, and the local volunteers are performing. We also continue to act as an advisory role for the Public Safety Forum. This year, we're splitting the forums so that we have the forum happening next month, and then, on October 17th, we will be holding a fireside chat format with the Police Department and the Fire Department. So, we encourage citizens to complete surveys and input questions to ask our two leaders. And the Public Safety Fair, which usually had been in conjunction with a Public Safety Forum, will be rescheduled sometime in the spring, will be a standalone activity. Any questions?
Thank you, Bobby, and thank you for your work on the automated license plate readers, which we will be discussing later this evening. Okay, that concludes the presentations from the commissions. Are there any postponements and orders of the day, Madam City Manager?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to oral communications. Madam City Clerk, how many cards do we have?
Yes, Mayor, we have eight requests to speak from Community Hall. That's 24 minutes. I see one hand raised virtually requesting to speak, so that would take us to 27 minutes.
Okay. We can start. Each speaker will get three minutes to speak.
Okay, very good. And anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please have your hand, your request to speak submitted, or your hand raised virtually in the next nine minutes. So, we'll begin with Jennifer Griffin, followed by Ying Sosik, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
I just wanted to remind everyone, though, this portion of the meeting is reserved for people wishing to address the council on any matter that's within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion. We will give each speaker three minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you, and it's nice to be in here where there's air conditioning. In that regard, I wanted to talk today about three potential SB 330 projects on Stevens Creek Boulevard that are, my main concern about these three projects are that we are losing viable retail. These three projects are the project planned for housing on the Pizza Hut Staples and the Fontana Restaurant site on Stevens Creek. There's also one at the Idlewild Shopping Center at Stevens Creek and Miller, which has the falafel store, which is very popular. And then, we also have the project which has the Panera Bread, and it's near Seish and Stevens Creek Boulevard. I have looked at the plans for these, and I plan to come in with each of the planners and look at the projects. My main concern with this is that we have very, very limited area on Stevens Creek Boulevard even now for retail. Why are we getting rid of active retail? Panera Bread, oh my God, I remember, that was probably 12 years ago. Mr. Lowenthal fought so hard to get that Panera in there. We spent hours going over the parking that, I mean, there were probably 10 meetings on this. That's what we did in detail. And now, we're wiping that out? That building is beautiful, and it's only probably 12 years old. That is a terrible waste of modern architecture. And I mean, my girlfriend lives near the new Panera on El Camino and Santa Clara, and that's where we're going to have to go, because there's no other Paneras nearby. That issue, then, let's go to the Idlewild Shopping Center. That falafel shop there has been there forever. It was Winchell's Donuts before. This is across from Valco. And I don't understand why we're giving up our retail. I mean, so few of us even shop in the city anymore. When I first moved here in the 80s, I could get anything I needed in Cupertino. Now, I have to drive to San Jose, Santa Clara, Sunnyvale to even get basic needs. I really, really think that it's very, it's useless to give in all of this to the housing. The RENA numbers are wrong, and we're sacrificing our retail. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Ying Sosik, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Ying.
Hi, thank you for the chance to speak, Ying Sosik. I have lived on Linda Vista Drive for 20 happy years, so I guess by now, you guess why I'm here. So, I just wanted to say, in the middle of August, our neighborhood hero, Randy On, he's back there. He walked hundreds of houses in our neighborhood and told a lot of people like me who had down working, wasn't paying attention, Randy told us about the Vista Heights and the Evilich Court development. That was the first time I heard about it. And needless to say, we got concerned, we got organized. Randy got organized. His petition, his first petition to the city carried 745 signatures. I myself canvassed hundreds of houses since, and we have had a good attendance meeting in Linda Vista Park. So, net-net, what I am saying is that there are hundreds of people in our neighborhoods that are very concerned for their safety, for the characteristics of their neighborhood, for their house value, for a lot of things. And we are talking a lot amongst ourselves. What is missing in this whole interaction is essentially you guys. So, we have recently sent our second email petition asking for a public hearing. I don't know if I'm using the right terminology, but to have a venue, to have a mechanism whereupon we can have a dialogue with you all who, you know, hold the power in all of this in zoning, in upzoning, in potentially reverting the upzoning. Anyhow, so we need your participation. Like I said, right, we have petitioned twice from hundreds of citizens. The question on the table now is, when can we have a hearing? When can we have an agenda? Right? So, this forum, I've only been to like three city council meetings myself. This is the third one. So, I realized that because of Brown's Act, you guys cannot come in right now. But I also see a little bit of a circular logic, right? I'm here asking for comment, and you cannot comment, and I come next time, you know, like the process repeats. So, my second question is this, what does it take here or outside of here for this to become an agenda, so we can finally, you know, cut through this and have a dialogue? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Veronica Lentfer. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening. I'd like to use a slide, please. Good evening, council members and staff. I find it appalling that a decision was made to eliminate all written communications for items associated with oral communications unless a council member forwards it to the city clerk. There are many reasons this should be reversed. This is a policy change, and policy changes should be made by the council during an open meeting where the public and council can provide input. This is equivalent to censorship. Only those comments good enough to be passed on to the city clerk are permitted to be published. This is discrimination. If you don't like me or agree with me, you don't publish it. Written communications is a record, often used as reference, but what we now have is incomplete records. Some get recorded, and others do not. Workload, this does not reduce the workload. Communication goes to the city clerk and council, then if chosen, it goes back to the city clerk. So, they have to process it two times, doubling the email load and having to look at each one to see what they include. When all communication was replaced in written communications document, it was, there was one place a council member could go to to get a complete packet organized by agenda items. Now, they have to scroll through and pick and choose emails. Transfers the workload to the council members to forward the email back to the city clerk. Hiding lobbying activities, removing the emails from written communications hides lobbying activities being done by special interests. Loss of transparency, what we end up with is a partial, incomplete, filtered view of the issues at the top of residents' minds. The minority view is no longer even considered or tolerated now. For the audience, if you sent in an email for oral communications and it does not appear in the written communications document, this is why. Please reverse this action. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Lisa Warren, followed by Veronica Lentfer, followed by Helena Cohen. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So, thank you, Peggy. You covered most, a lot of what I was going to cover, so I wholeheartedly agree with everything Peggy said, and it shouldn't be any surprise, because for two years, maybe more, 18 months loudly, residents have been discouraged, frustrated, angry about the continuing growth of lack of transparency from the city. I will just call it the city. That does include staff and oftentimes, city council, but staff has this prerogative for some reason, which I agree wholeheartedly with Peggy, should not be a staff decision, especially when it's complaint after complaint about the same thing. And there's been two workshops driven by people that are supposed to be helping with governance in a city, and I feel like it was a waste of money, because nothing's been done to improve various, many of the problems. And this just seems like something that a consultant of governance would have said, heck no, don't do that. However, I, there's been a recent, there's a lot of consultants that have been hired as coaches for staff, city manager, senior staff, even some council members. And I wonder what we're paying these people to coach, because recently, just recently in May, one with David Sykes of a firm, who ran the first governance meeting for a couple hours and was supposed to improve some things, has been extended now until May or June of 2025 at the cost of up to $150,000 for coaching. And we don't see what we're getting. We don't know what we're getting. The description is pretty interesting, and this is available, this, and here's the up price, excuse me. The original was for $7,200. It's now been increased by 140, over $142,000, which is over 600 hours at $240 an hour for this gentleman, and he was good. When I was at the workshop, he was good, but I don't feel like the right things are being done. And also, for the record, I'm going to hand this to Kirsten, State Clerk, because I wholeheartedly support a public comment about this subject of getting worse and worse at being transparent that was not put into the record.
Thank you, Lisa. That's your time. Next, we have Veronica Lentfer, followed by Helena Cohen, followed by Rhoda Frye.
Good evening, council members and residents. My name is Veronica Lentfer, and I'm a longtime Cupertino resident and homeowner, actually for over 28 years, and I live in the Evilich Court neighborhood. I'm here to request that the council form future agenda items in order to down... I'm here to request that the council form future agenda items in order to downsize the Evillich Court area back to R1, which is the appropriate zoning designation that had been in existence for at least fifty years, probably way more than that. Members of the current and past city councils erred in creating a housing element that placed higher density housing in inappropriate locations like Evillich Court, which are away from transportation corridors. This inappropriate zoning change will have a severe impact on the existing neighborhood. In addition, the zoning change was made without directly notifying the neighbors. One of our neighbors, referenced earlier, talked with a hundred and fifty people in person, walking door to door. Most residents had no knowledge of the proposed Evillich Court project and were shocked. According to a September twenty-third memo from the city attorney, Chris Jensen, it is possible for the city council to down, downzone residential parcels. According to information I received from the city files, during, during community input on the housing element, the favorability score for Evillich was only eighteen percent and it received the highest number of responses. This low score, combined with the high response rate, clearly indicates overwhelming community opposition to such a dramatic change in this neighborhood. This score falls far below the forty percent threshold that city planners identified as a priority for council consideration at that time. Additionally, this site accounts for less than two percent of the total number of units in the Cupertino housing element, so it is a minor change to the plan. I request the council make agenda items at an upcoming meeting for two things. One, a comprehensive review of the town home zoning process. And two, down, downzone the Evillich site and make provisions for additional housing at a different and more suitable location in Cupertino near established traffic corridors. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. Next we have Helena Cohen, followed by Rhoda Frye, followed by Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Helena.
Good evening, council members. I'm not going to make a long and detailed speech, but I, I want to just say that I'm in agreement with my other neighbors here, that I'm vehemently and adamantly against, first of all, Vista Heights, which to me is, and everybody in our neighborhood thinks is completely untenable. And the other thing I'm very much in favor of is down, sorry, downzoning Evillich. I mean, it, it just doesn't make any sense to put in the kind of density that you are intending or you've even thought about. And that's all I really want to say and that I'm, there aren't many people here tonight, but you have to know that the neighborhood is just crazy with, with anger and they're, they're very angry about what's going on here. And it's not in your best interest not to listen, so I suggest that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Helena. Next we have Rhoda Frye, followed by Luis Sedadi, followed by Claudio Bono. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, I've got a grab bag of issues today. First, I want to concur with the previous speakers. And, you know, we haven't seen council member way since July and the question residents have been asking is, has she vacated her seat and what are the ramifications? Also wanted to address some of Mr. Claudio Bono's remarks in calling community members liars and I find that unbecoming of a commissioner, to wit, residents expressed concern that the city's property on Burn did not have a for sale sign. And he's, he said that it did. I, he refuted it. I drive by there on a regular basis. I will tell you that there was not a for sale sign. There was a frame. The for sale sign went up after the property had sold. The property was dirty, there was garbage around it and it was embarrassing and I just wanted you to know that. I was also surprised by the new memo on City Hall and I have a picture of a previous slide that had been showed to council. In two thousand twenty-two, the estimate for new City Hall was eighty million dollars versus under thirty million for remodel renovation. So here's one of the slides that was shown at that time. And so the question is, what happens? In February two thousand twenty-three, council had abandoned the fiscally conservative plan to remodel, renovate and asked for yet another study. And what came back was this shocking study in October to consider putting housing on our public, public properties like City, City Hall, Committee Hall, et cetera. So then, at that time, the council majority voted to extend the contract to a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And where are the results? We're looking at that having happened over a year ago. So here, and anyway, so here are some of the details on that. More on money. In February, I reported misallocation of below market rate funds toward paying for the hundred and, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the Yimby frivolous lawsuit. Strangely, that lawsuit appears to have been filed at the same day that the first housing element was submitted and we have yet to see restitution of those funds. And in my mind, we've crossed the threshold for misallocation to misappropriation. Furthermore, after the contract exceeded its fifty thousand dollar estimate, there's no, no apparent new contract. We're in a fiscal crisis. Please, let's dot our i's and cross our t's. Also want to show you what's going on. Please put it on the upper, overhead. This is what's going on with hotel tax. We have not recovered from COVID. This is two thousand seventeen, we're not, we're actually dipping last year. This is a year before, of course, this is in COVID timeframe. I've heard that the sales tax issue is going to be really bad for us. Here's another slide. This is where we're going to be. This is where we were. It's bad. Let's fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. Next we have Luis Sedadi, followed by Claudio Bono. Welcome, Luis. And then we will move to those requesting to speak virtually.
Hello. I'm Luis Sedadi and I've just returned from South Africa, South America trip for two weeks. So if I seem a little bit disoriented, that is true. So let me just increase the font on my speech for just a second and then I will be less disoriented. First, I wanted to report that there's been some innuendos about Hung Way and all that. And I'm just really happy to report that Hung Way is getting better. Her tumors has shrunk by over thirty percent and she is nightly, Taiwan time, daytime, calling people daily and including three hours in phone calls and very energetic and she's getting better and she'll be back. The Taiwan gene therapy for her specific Chinese women, non-smoking cancer, the gene therapy is really working. So hooray. Secondly, I'm, I'm very saddened to see residents coming from Evillich and Vista upset. And there has been misinformation at the chats that the residents have been directed to. The chats are closed chats whereby folks who could post the truth and data have been deleted from the chats by the administrators. The chat administrators post misinformation and agree with each other, leading the residents to become increasingly upset with the city. Perhaps there could be a liaison from the city that could be permitted to read the posts with all the misinformation and then post the actual facts, data and different routes that could be taken by the different streets. There is a difference between builders remedy projects that may not even be built and housing element projects, including Evillich, that were included in the housing element back in two thousand twenty-two, even by Kitty Moore. So I would recommend that a liaison speak to the residents after being permitted to see the closed chats with their misinformation to assist in clarifying the reality, facts, consequences and true routes where the different streets can feel that their different issues can be addressed versus a chat that creates all this upset to try to get a bunch of residents to show up at city councils screaming. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. Next we have Claudio Bono. Welcome, Claudio.
Good evening, Mayor Fruin. Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor Mohan, Vice Mayor Fruin, city staff, everybody. Good evening. My name is Claudio Bono and tonight I'll speak for myself. I'm here to keep the record straight. There seems to be a lot of resident, I still don't understand the consequences of past council action from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two. And I wanted to make sure that you hear it from me once again. There are tons of emails circulating and they're coming from emails that says Cupertino facts. I wouldn't be Claudio Bono if I would put that little phrase that I would prefer that we rename them and call them Cupertino lies for a vote. The housing element was not ready to go in, in October twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. City council minutes in November two thousand twenty-two, November fifteen, keep that in mind, clearly show that there is an incomplete administrative draft that was ready and it would take a lengthy review process that would last over a year. So that council in two thousand twenty-two chose not to self-certify. Instead, council member Moore with a second from then Vice Mayor Chow opted at that meeting to direct staff to clean up the administrative draft, publish it for extended public review over holidays and submit to HCD by end of January. So you all guys knew that you wouldn't be ready, but to come back and to blame the council majority, as you call them, it's kind of shameful. So the public needs to know and needs to be reminded that they failed Cupertino. The new council majority took process seriously to shut off the builders remedy and I'm here to say enough with the lies. It is my hope also separately that as a governing body, that you guys can do something about fake information online and also public safety. More than ever, things have changed in Cupertino. All my life, and I have over thirty-five plus years experience in hospitality industry, I've always been associated with great achievements and now the first thing you see is that threat. That's not nice for me, for my family, for anyone else. So I value safety in this city, but things have changed and it's my hope that you can do something about it. And I thank also personally the sheriff for all this assistance in this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Claudio. And then we will move to those requesting to speak virtually. We have two individuals that had their hand raised before the nine-minute cutoff. That is Tracy Colcheron and David Yan. Welcome, Tracy.
Hi, thank you so much. I just wanted to help reiterate what the Linda Vista residents have asked for, which is an open, transparent, public forum. Currently, it seems like there might be some closed-door meetings with the developers happening, but, you know, I guess the question would be, why? Why does it have to be that way? Why can't the process for resolving the Evillich issue involve the staff, involve council, a public forum? You know, there are many ways to do this, public forum. You could have a special session, you could have an agenda item, but let's please find a way to help the residents resolve this publicly and as opposed to relying on, you know, either council members or even like city council candidates to, to do this brokering. And then the second, I wanted to echo Rhoda Frye's point around City Hall. I saw that this informational memo came out and I did want to clarify, it seems a little bit odd that costs are jumping around. You know, on October seventeenth, the cost of the City Hall was reported closer to eighty million for a new building, as reported by Matt Morley. And in this document, unless I'm misreading it, it, it has a very different number, like, you know, twenty-five to fifty. So either way, it feels like this deserves more than a memo and it would deserve an agenda item that is discussed in council. City Hall is, is too important of an issue to just be relegated to a memo. So if we could please have some public discussion around this, it doesn't make sense to me that construction costs would drop so precipitously in a time of inflation. That would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tracy. Next we have David Yan. Welcome, David.
Hi, good evening. I live on, just right at the intersection of Linda Vista Drive. I'm here tonight to express opposition to the proposed high-density development on Evillich Court as well as the Vista Heights Builders Remedy Project adjacent to Linda Vista Park. I fully recognize the importance of addressing housing needs in Cupertino and support development of affordable housing options, but they must be located in areas with appropriate infrastructure that can accommodate this additional density. I have been a resident and homeowner in Cupertino since two thousand nineteen and my childhood home is actually less than a mile away from me. I'm on Montavista along in two thousand one. You can safely say I have long-term roots and a vested interest in this city. It's quite disheartening to watch a single-family home community turn into a high-density neighborhood. It's amplified by the fact that there are not one, but two such developments within a quarter mile. And I never imagined that our neighborhood would be on the cusp of regressing backwards from what I remembered as a child. Development is really complex issue. It's got many stakeholders. I understand the need to provide more housing options to meet state mandates and affordability challenges, but the proposed developments are not what we need. These single-family home neighborhoods, the hard-working families that reside here are renowned schools, each have decades of proud history and it's the heartbeat of our city, not the real estate developers looking to make a large, one-time profit on Cupertino real estate, who have no long-term interest in the city. These developers stand to make millions of dollars on developments, only so because they are developing in a nearby community of residents that made Cupertino real estate so valuable to begin with. My neighbors worked for decades, worked relentlessly hard to live here. They sent their kids to some of the nation's top schools, neighbors that made it possible for giants like Apple and Google and many others to locally hire some of the best talent. And building this community doesn't happen overnight. It took a decade. That's reflected in the real estate prices that you see today and why the developers want to develop here. So how did our voices as residents not get heard in this process? Responsible groups should consider both community needs and the long-term sustainability of the area. The area surrounding Evillich Court is ecologically sensitive. Building on a, fifty-one homes on a two-and-a-half acre hillside would negatively affect these green spaces. And, you know, all, all of the communities shared these concerns on September twenty-first. You know, by employee officials keeping these projects a skier behind meeting minutes, it lacks transparency and falls short of the notification and is a cop-out for addressing the residents directly. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you to everyone who came before our council this evening, as well as the ones who came on Zoom to present your comments. Just wanted to draw everyone's attention to a downzone, a memo from the city attorney on downzoning. So take a look at that. That's fairly recent. And I know staff has met with many neighborhood groups, so to, to, to the point about development in the Linda Vista area, there's more to come and, and nothing is going to be decided before, a lot of work ahead of us and you will be involved. Okay. Councilmember Chow, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I think a member of the public mentioned three sites in Cupertino will be turned from commercial to residential only. I hope to have an info, a memo on how much estimated sales tax loss we might have on this project specifically, but maybe a projection so that it helps us with planning, especially we know that we are already losing some sales tax.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Chow. So you're looking at the loss of revenue, sales tax from the, which site?
I think it's three sites, the Pizza House site, the United Furniture site. There is another site.
Panera?
Panera, yeah.
Okay. We'll work on it.
So I know some, the businesses aren't, not there yet, but then I would like the historical data on that so we know. Yeah, thank you. And another thing is, I think, yeah, I think with the memo- And another thing is, I think, yeah, I think with the memo, many public, members of the public has read the memo. Still, they would like to have a hearing or a study session on the process because I think there are still a lot of questions they would like to ask, and maybe an interactive session about that. I understand we can't do a public hearing on a specific project, especially no project has been submitted. However, I think we can do a study session on the process to adjust housing element in case of any upzoning and downzoning and answer questions. So I would like to request a study session, the process of adjusting housing element sites.
Moore, second. I do have a question about the, through the attorney, I'm sorry, through the mayor, if I could ask the city attorney, with regards to our TBD items in the future. If we have four people on the council, are two council members allowed to get an item onto the agenda at this point?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that the, an absence of a council member affects the number that's required to request a future agenda item. So, and you know, so it's, the rules provide that two council members may request a future agenda item and, you know, but council would, for anything that requires a council action, there would still need to be three votes if there were four of you present and voting.
Okay, so we could continue to be blocked on getting items on the agenda, barring a third vote. All right, thank you.
Unless the mayor agrees to agendize it, right?
The rule, so yeah, so I'm just going to answer this briefly, and then I think we should probably get back to the agenda. The rules provide that the mayor and city manager coordinate and attempt to come to a consensus on the agenda.
Thank you. I think one other question was brought up by a member, and also I got inquiries earlier. Maybe a memo would clarify whether the absence of more than 60 days would require anyone to vacate the seat. So if a memo on that would be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Do I need to second that memo request? I'm curious about that as well.
No, I've noted two infomemos requests from Councilmember Chow.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that council wants to pull? Items five through nine, 10?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Chow pulled item number nine.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, staff, for very, do I need to give the reason?
Not at this time. I don't think you're recognized. But Mayor, if I could jump in, I believe the Public Works Department would like to request that item number nine be moved to be heard before the public hearing to ensure, just because it's time-sensitive. So if I could request a motion from council.
Okay, we will do that.
So moved. Moore, second.
Okay. Should we vote? Please vote by lights.
The motion carries unanimously with Wei absent.
Okay, so we will move item number nine to further down on the agenda just before the public hearing. Any other items? Do we? Excuse me? What was that?
Yes, Mayor, we have requests to speak on a couple items.
Yes, we will go to the public for consent calendar discussions.
Just to clarify, this is, these are items five through eight and 10. So if anybody would like to speak on those at this time?
Actually, Jennifer, there is somebody that has requested to speak ahead of you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm totally confused again about item number 10. If somebody could explain, I have requested it to, I would like to speak on it. I'm not sure how we do that because the rules keep changing constantly. Please advise me of how I can talk about the safety issues in this city. Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer, the mayor will allow you to speak now. Since...
Remember, I started crying one time because I've never seen anything like this in 24 years. Okay, I don't know what I'm talking about. I would like to address number 10 at the appropriate time. Normally, we, it is pulled when the audience requests it. This is a very important item, and I don't know what you want me to do.
Please, this is your opportunity to provide comments for item 10.
Okay. I was the one that originally talked about Apple being a part and a partner two to three years ago if we have a disaster. If you all weren't aware, there is a horrific hurricane that hit Florida, Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina, Tennessee. Cupertino has the potential to have things like that happen. I am very, very pleased that the city took this to heart and planned. My mother has a 90-year-old cousin right now that has no power since Friday in South Carolina. These are the things that happen to us. October 17th is coming up, and that is the anniversary of the 1989 Loma Prieta earthquake. We have to remember that there are things that happen that we don't plan for. We need to plan for them. And believe me, since I live near the Apple Two campus, I know that my neighborhood, if something happens, we can go there to get food and water. Because in the 1989 earthquake, when Hewlett Packard was in Santa Clara at Stevens Creek Boulevard, I knew that they had access there because they had, because I lived in the apartments near there. I think that we need, we can't, I'm really, really upset that this was put on consent calendar. To me, it's trivializing the problems that we have. And I didn't see anything, you didn't reach out to the public for any of these things about the dangers, et cetera. I'm glad that we had all these partners, but I didn't, there was no, nothing happened with the public. I, yeah, I really have a problem with having to talk about this. We had no, I still don't know what the city did to prepare for this because I'm having to talk blind. And I really think we need to get our act together with the consent calendar. This is an important item. It should not have been parked in consent calendar. I feel very, very jeopardized because we didn't, we just trivialized this for the city. We ignored the public. And believe me, if there's a disaster, we're going to have to take care of ourselves. Even in Virginia, they're packing mules and to get into areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And next, we have Lloyd McKee, who'd like to speak on item seven. Just a reminder, anyone wishing to speak on the items on the consent, with the exception of item nine, you have, please submit your request in the next six minutes. Welcome, Lloyd.
Hello, my name is Lloyd McKee. I live in Loretta Drive neighborhood. I've lived there since 1992. I'd like to thank the city clerk and the council members for seeing the emails with the photos. And the reason there were different photos is because it's not an isolated incident. This happens on different days, and the photos represent the different days. So that's the main item I want to pass on. And I just want to thank the council for your consideration. And please, look at the photos. It is impacting our neighborhood, so. Okay, thank you for your help.
Thank you, Lloyd. And there are two members of the public requesting to speak virtually. We have Cupertino resident, followed by San R. Welcome, Cupertino resident.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening, distinguished Cupertino city council members. I spoke during the September 17th first reading of this item number seven. This ordinance regarding extending restricted parking beyond Ann Arbor Court to segments of Ann Arbor Avenue and Loretta Drive. I am one of the nine petition signers that lives within this zone and am very, very grateful for your support on this ordinance. With your support, my neighbors and I will regain some peace on our street, parking spots in front of our homes for our cars and guest vehicles, space to put out our ecology bins, and cleaner streets because street sweepers will once again have access to our curbs. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for your support and thank you for all that you do for our community.
Thank you. And next, we have San R. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Mohan and councilmembers. I wish to speak on the items that are passing an ordinance to prohibit parking on streets like Loretta Vista and on item five and one more and item seven. Reading the staff report, it looks like construction does not actually begin till spring of 2025. So I'm curious why we are prohibiting parking starting right now if construction does not start till spring of 2025. I would request the city staff and council to please look into this and not prohibit parking prematurely when there isn't construction happening and there aren't protected bike lanes already being installed. There is no reason to prohibit parking ahead of time. We are still a good six months ahead, maybe even further if the project slips. So I request council and staff to please make sure that you separate the items that you are approving today and make sure that construction will not start, I mean, prohibition of parking will not start until construction actually begins. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And Mayor, I see no additional requests to speak on the consent calendar items.
Okay, that sounds like there are no other comments on the consent calendar. So let's bring it back to the council. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar? Five, six, seven, eight, and 10.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Chow, second. Let's vote by lights, please, to adopt the consent calendar, all items except number nine.
The motion carries unanimously with Wei absent.
Right, thank you. Okay, so we should actually go to item number nine, which was pulled from the consent calendar. And there, I see staff's... Okay, Councilmember Chow, since you pulled the item from consent, can you tell us why and what questions we have? Are the staff ready to take on your questions?
Yes, thank you for answering a lot of my questions in the staff report. Really appreciate that. I got a request from the residents to pull the item. I think he has some question about the cost and whether there is any ability to reduce it or, and he has commented about a certain location. So I would hope that residents would comment on that.
I just wanted a clarification. What we are, what is the action demanded of council today?
Yes, Mayor, the ask before council is to approve a design-build option. The total cost and the location of the project will come back later in the calendar year for further discussion. If possible, I would like to focus the energy on the design-build, which is a, Chris, what is the public contract code?
Yeah, so there's a legal requirement that before commencing this design-build procurement process, we come to council and seek approval. You know, Susan and Chad are here, and they can speak a little bit to why the design-build process, we feel the design-build process is appropriate here. But this is really just the first step in the procurement process. You know, there will be opportunities in the future for input into scope and design. And, you know, I'll defer to Chad and Susan on the details of those issues.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Chow, if you had questions.
Yeah, so I, I think one of my question was, oh, should we do public comment first?
Since you pulled it off consent?
Because at the request of the public, I pulled it.
You have, you have three plus more minutes for questions if you'd like to use it.
Okay, and I think for design build, then, one of the question I asked was, usually it's for a project that does, that's much bigger and has a lot of variations to consider. But to me, it seems solar panel, it's pretty standard already. So I didn't understand why we need design and build. And the staff report only provided positive advantages of it. But to make a better informed decision, I would like to know what's the drawback of that also because there is a reason that the government code require a design bid, a design bid and build process and require a council discretionary approval specifically on design build. So could staff provide more information on that? Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Hello, good evening, council. My name is Susan Michael. I'm the CIP manager. And to try to address your questions, I've got two of them. I might have written, missed one, so do let me know. That this is used on, the design build is typically used on larger projects. Keep in mind that this is a project that spans five different city facilities. And at each facility, it's not a matter of simply putting solar panels on a roof or a particular type of roof. It has a number of different conditions that we're considering for the layout of those panels. So it is quite complicated, and we're dealing with a number of existing conditions as well. So that is the scope and the complication that you're talking about, the disadvantages of design build. We believe that the advantage of design build, especially in this particular instance, is that it will help us with schedule. It, we have confidence in the cost and the scope elements of this project. But one of the main drivers of this project is schedule. We're trying to make sure that we accomplish the projects before the April, mid-April 2026 deadline. That is part and parcel of the PG&E application that we're trying to take advantage of. There are, we believe that it would be helpful in that we would...
Yeah, thank you. So the main driver is we need to meet the schedule. And, but you are confident that with the design build process, the cost won't be too much more than the regular design bid and build process.
That is correct.
Yeah, that's good to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
So I'm afraid, thank you. I'm afraid I'm getting a little bit into the design part, but you're mentioning that it could be on a roof. And having seen the CUSD, like the carports essentially that they've been building with their solar panel configurations, are you anticipating that all of these would be on roofs or that you might have something like what CUSD is doing? Okay.
We anticipate numerous conditions.
Okay, so some of each, basically?
Yes.
Okay. And then at some point, we're going to be able to have our discussions about those because some of us were pretty surprised with what CUSD actually ended up putting in, and we didn't really feel like we had a lot of say. There's lights that are inside of them. So there's going to be a time when we're going to be able to talk about all those kinds of issues so that neighbors aren't going to be negatively impacted by them.
That is correct.
Absolutely. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to the public and see if there are any comments on item number nine.
Mayor, I currently see one hand raised virtually. That is from San R. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. I have numerous concerns on this item. My first concern is that the cost to the city is nearly $4 million, even if you're approved the grants that have been quoted. So the project costs $6.3 million, out of which the grant covers only $1.9 million. So over $4 million in cost to the city at a time when we are in a budget crisis. I also don't understand why this project is doing, I don't understand why this project is now addressing Blackberry Farms since the utility costs there should be minimal given the nighttime activity is minimal. So I don't understand what is the cost-benefit ratio for the Blackberry Farms versus the other sites. Most importantly, this project needs to complete on all of these sites by April 2026 to be eligible for the NEN 3 rates, or rather the NEN 2 rates, I believe. And if it does not complete by April 2026, 80% of the benefit is lost. So we're looking at a project that yields $500,000 annually over what period of time before it offsets the cost to the city? And if the project is not complete by April, what happens? The second thing is I'm very concerned about the impact of the sports center... concerned about the impact of the sports center because of this. What kind of disruption and downtime, if any, is going to occur? I think that has not been published in the staff report. I would like to ask that staff make it very clear in the report on what is the disruption to these facilities and to the public use of these facilities, without which I ask that council members not approve this today. Because without that information, we may be looking at a year, a year and a half of disruption to facilities that are highly used by the public. The sports center is used by over 1,000 members a day. And we do not want to see any kind of downtime or disruption of the sports center because of this project. There have been cases in the past where maintenance work had to be done at the sports center, and it had to be shut down for a week. And there were concerns about liability and so on. And so if we look at this project now spanning 12 months to 18 months, and then we get the same notification saying we can't use the sports center for 12 to 18 months because of liability, that is a huge concern. I ask council members to please not approve this until all the facts on disruption and downtime and cost have been addressed, as well as the likelihood of completing this project on time. And finally, I want to echo the concerns on what we have seen with solar panels at CUSD. It has resulted in extreme amount of public dissatisfaction with the lighting, with the extremely bright lights, especially in residential areas. And we don't want to see that kind of lighting at Blackberry Farm. It would be a travesty. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And Mayor, we do have one request to speak from Community Hall, from Peggy Griffin.
Okay. Welcome, Peggy. You will have three minutes, Peggy.
Okay, won't take that long. Good evening, council members and staff. I'm all in favor of solar, but I request that when you do plan the solar, that you take into consideration the trees. Solar, I mean, trees and solar don't get along very well. And here, around City Hall, we have some beautiful trees. It has a nice atmosphere. Same with around the sports center, there's some trees there that protect the neighbors nearby. Blackberry Farm and other areas. So pick places where you don't have to touch the trees, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And I see one additional request from Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Hi. So I'm just going to throw this out there because there is a company who is producing solar that is basically, well, it's, you use windows to generate solar. So if we're going to have all these high buildings, tall buildings and other things, and there's chances to use this technology and product, it's being designed in Southern California, I can put you in touch with one of the board members. You're going to have windows anyway, so why not produce solar from windows and not have to have panels all over the place that are disruptive to humans and animals? Remember, we have dark sky. And these things with lights under them at night are not dark sky, in my opinion.
Thank you, Lisa. And next we have Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you. I'm concerned about the trees. My nephew is actually working at a solar company in the Netherlands right now, and they are developing programmable, tiny pieces of solar panels. We, I have been around this city long enough to know that we need to embrace the cutting edge of technology. So having the olden days where somebody puts up solar and we have to cut the tree down does not cut it anymore. We, the city needs to get a life, basically. Get out there and embrace the technology. Like the previous speaker said, there are differences in solar technology. These pieces that my nephew, who is a programmer, is working on right now, he's been there two years at this company, they put them on the sides of buildings, they put them on roofs all over Europe. The company has contracts with other countries in Europe. I think that we need to pull our tech people in to make the latest cutting-edge suggestions. Cupertino is known as tech. We don't want to be in the passe, old lane. We need to be in the cutting edge. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And Mayor, I see no additional requests to speak on this item.
Okay, let's bring it back to council. Any other comments on item number nine? Councilmember Chow, I see your light on.
Yeah, so I have a question. So this item was approved as one of the many CIP projects. And if today is only design-build process, then it's going to go out for bid, then there is no time at all for the public to even comment on which sites or configuration. I know that many parents near the Stockholm site complained about ethnic impact for their neighborhood. I think the Sunnyvale mayor even went out there because the people are upset. So we want solar panel. We want to save electricity. But Blackberry Farm is our kind of nature preserve area. So another question would be, do we need to complete all of the sites to get the benefit? Or can we complete one, maybe say in City Hall, in time to get the benefit for additional sites that we can decide later? Is that possible? And here's another question that was brought up, is how much will be the construction time? Would that affect any of the current, the parking lot usage during the construction?
Thank you for your questions, council members, through the mayor. We can, we will be coming back to council. We plan to come back in December. And we also are planning to go to the next meetings, the Sustainability Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission. And we're also planning to have a community meeting at the end of October. So those are all on our calendar. And when we got the CIP project approved, we did let you know that we would come back when we had better information about each site. And we've been working with a consultant to develop packages. And so we will be coming back with more information about costs, benefit, and layout and impact to the sites. And we were going to get the impact, sorry, the feedback from the commissions and then come to council with that information so that you can weigh in on the process as well.
Do you mean the location could still be adjusted after we had community meeting and had meeting at Sustainability Commission?
Correct.
So would we be able to complete one site so we get it hooked to the PG&E system? And then would that work? Or do we have to link, hook every site by the deadline?
Yes, so I mean, I would just remind the council that the design is not on the agenda today. I think Susan's answer indicated that there would be a community meeting, two commission meetings, and a council meeting, all of which would be opportunities to provide public input on that subject.
Can I get answers maybe after the meeting? I think people are concerned about the construction time, whether the parking lot would still be of usage at sports center, for example. Thank you.
I don't think, I'm sorry, through the mayor, I don't think we have those information just yet. I kind of want to remind council and that they're asking us to get the design bills approved by council today so we can go ahead and get the application for the project to PG&E in time for NEM three. And then we'll be talking about the design. We're happy to share that information when it's available. We just don't have anything to share at this point.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. So I was wondering if it would be possible if staff could provide a memo regarding our electricity bills. I was going through accounts payable. And what, I was seeing the $500,000 expected savings per year. If we could have just a little bit of information about that, I would be interested in it. Also, if it is possible, I was just looking on the internet regarding the solar glass and coatings. I do see a lot of window real estate within this building. If that is something that you are able to integrate and it is cost effective compared to the panels, you know, please, please look into it. I think it could be particularly interesting with these windows on this building if it is at all cost feasible for us. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted a quick clarification. You mentioned December, so in December, you'll come back with details about location, cost, design?
Yes, our consultants are working on a report at this time that includes a cost-benefit analysis, as well as information on potential grant funding that's available. Basically, all the technical that we can muster in the next, you know, short time, based on the layouts, the conceptual design layouts that we're working on.
Okay.
So we hope to have better information at that time.
Okay. So my understanding is this is just the first step in a long process. And all we're asked to do today is to undertake, to approve the design-build-
That is correct.
-process.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve item number nine? Councilmember Moore, you had a comment?
I move the recommended action.
Great.
Second.
Okay, we have-
Do I need a second for the info memo request for electricity?
No, I already got that. Thank you.
Okay, so let's vote by lights. We have a motion and a second.
The motion carries unanimously with way absent.
Thank you, council.
Okay. Let's move on to public hearings. And item number 11, Proposed Amendments to Municipal Code Chapters 19.04, 19.08, and 19.60. All relates to the general commercial zones and associated environmental review. The recommended action is that we conduct this public hearing, and we conduct the first reading of the ordinance. And then hopefully adopt the ordinance to make the changes. So let's start right away with the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and Cupertino residents. John Martier, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. And thank you for the introduction, Mayor, to this agenda item. As introduced, this is a municipal code amendment to various, mainly the CG ordinance, but also chapter 19.8 definitions, as well as, excuse me, chapter 1904 general provisions. Essentially, the general plan of the city of Cupertino does allow staff and as well as the Plan Commission and City Council to, on occasion, revisit retail standards within the municipal code as evidenced by strategy, general plan strategy LU-9.1.4, which states regulations periodically review and update land use and zoning requirements for retail, commercial, and office development in order to attract high-quality sales tax-producing businesses and services while adapting to the fast change of retail, commercial, and office environment. Before I get into the meat of the changes, let's first look at the Plan Commission recommendations, as this was brought to the Plan Commission on September 10th of this year. The Plan Commission recommended the City Council adopt Staff's recommendation 3.2 with the following modifications, that the ordinance should replicate the City of Palo Alto's definition of farmer's market, that the outdoor seating is permitted without a 20% cap, so as long as parking requirements are met within this 19, municipal code, chapter 1912 for parking, that the convenience market use class shall continue to require conditional use permit, and that entertainment facilities such as dancing, live music, and full-service or fast-food self-service restaurants shall be a permitted use rather than a conditional use. So the analysis, so going through the changes within the municipal code that are proposed by staff and recommended by Plan Commission, chapter 1904 general provisions, a section was added called exclusionary zoning, which clarified the uses that are not listed on any land use tables as permitted or conditional, they are deemed prohibited. However, there are processes within this section that give the Director of Community Development discretion to interpret a new use as one that could be allowed. 1908 definitions clarify that bar facilities are a facility in a restaurant, or ancillary to a restaurant use, rather. Farmer's market, we add a definition as well as use class. Food store, add a definition as a new general category, which includes a new definition of a grocery store, and combining and amending the convenience markets and specialty food store definitions. Pet daycare, add a definition which clarifies the existing pet shop use. Restaurant, expand the existing definition to add self-service to existing restaurant, fast-food use. And specialized school, add a definition to existing use which we did not have a definition for, but rather use class and for. Within table 1960030, permitted, conditional, excluded uses in general commercial zoning districts. The specialty food stores and fast foods as separate uses are now permitted without use permit. We added, the staff added farmer's market as a use class, which is permitted by a use permit, heard at a approved at admin hearing level. Changing approval authority to the following uses from a use permit Plan Commission to use permit admin hearing, which include eating establishments with separate bar facilities, late evening activities, pet shops located in structures that are not soundproof. Moved outdoor display and outdoor seating standards from 196050 land use activity to back into the table 1960030. And in terms of table 1960060, development standards in the CG zones, essentially just add language that reference standards in to the general plan, specific plan, or any other underlying land use document where this commercial establishment is located. No standards were changed in this. This is more of a clarifying amendment. Refer standard to landscape ordinance, municipal code, chapter 14. Again, no standards were changed, just simply cross-referencing at this point. And we, and staff did modify with Plan Commission recommendation as well, adder standards, added standards for odor abatement systems in eating establishments, particularly if they are within neighborhood districts, residential neighborhood, residential districts, excuse me. The recommended action is that the City Council conduct the public hearing and conduct the first reading of the ordinance to adopt an ordinance to find that the proposed actions are exempt from California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and SEQA guidelines, and amend the following, chapter 1904 general provisions, and chapter 19.8 definitions, and chapter 1960 general commercial zones. Next steps, if council approves the introduction of the ordinance, a second reading would be scheduled for the next regular meeting of the City Council, which is two weeks from tonight. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, John. This is a time for council members to ask questions of staff on the presentation that they've made. I am not seeing any lights. Okay, Vice Mayor, for one.
I hope this one will be relatively simple. You've added a definition for a specialized school. So I was hoping that you could maybe walk us through what that is and what provoked adding it.
So the ordinance always had a use class for specialized schools, but never defined it. So it was kind of a gray area of what's considered specialized school, what's not. Currently, the general commercial ordinance limits specialized schools to less than 50% of the area of a shopping center. If they were to go above that, they would have to submit a CUP, which would be heard at admin hearing. Staff is not recommending that be changed, and that standard is going to be consistent. However, adding the specialized school makes the, makes that use class a little more black and white. So this includes, you know, stuff like art schools, ballet or the dance schools, drama schools, martial arts academies, you know, personal growth and development, such as personal fitness uses as well.
So in the absence of that definition, what would your approach have been if you'd had a school that you might have wondered was a specialized school or not?
Well, I think this definition pretty much explains staff's approach, but this put it in writing. And, you know, it's, so it's, it doesn't come off as staff being subjective and maybe having too much discretion. This actually kind of says, we can point to something to a business owner. a business owner.
Got it.
This is what it is.
Thank you.
So I had a question, sort of following up on Vice Mayor Fruen's comment. So the farmer's market also did not have any definition, so we are adding a definition for the first time?
Correct. Not just definition, it wasn't even considered a separate use class, so there was no defined process for a farmer's market at all within CG zones prior.
And so the same question, if we had a farmer's market applicant, what would we have done without this definition?
So, you know, the CG zone does allow for the community development director to, it's currently row 21 of the table, sorry if I have to flip through my paper here, table 1960030, which allows the community development director discretion to identify similar uses that permit within this table. And so in the past, for example, the farmer's market at the Oaks, that was done with the director's minor modification permit, I believe like 15 years ago or so. However, you know, it, by adding a use class in a process and as well as a definition, similar to specialized schools, you know, staff can point to something, and it gives an expectation for decision-makers such as yourself, as well as a farmer's market applicant, as to what to expect in terms of fees and process, as well as the community.
Right. And this applies to farmer's markets that the city runs?
Only farmer's markets within, so the definition applies throughout the city regardless of the farmer's market, regardless of where the farmer's markets are located, they still have to say, get the same certification from the state and county, county's agricultural division. In terms of the process for approving farmer's markets, this only applies to zones that are, properties are zoned CG, general commercial.
So even the definition, I'm thinking of the Deans of farmer's market, does it have to comply with this definition, even though it's their farmer's market?
All farmer's markets have to be certified by the state of California, as well as the county's Division of Agriculture, but in terms of approval from the city, that's beyond, it's a state property, so we have no control over approving the farmer's market on that side.
Thank you, John. I am seeing no other lights. Councilmember Moore?
So...
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Moore?
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. So I was looking at the changes you made with regards to the approval for the restaurants, trying to locate it again, but it looks like it had been a CUP that would go to the planning commission, and then now it goes to, it would be an admin decision. Trying to locate this one.
It's row four in table 1960030.
Okay. So what was the thinking on changing the approval authority?
Are you speaking specifically for separate bar facilities and restaurants?
Yes, and would you happen to know what PDF that is, or page in the packet? I'm looking at the redline version of Appendix A.
I don't unfortunately, Councilmember Moore.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
If I could add, I think if the question is, because it still would remain a conditional use permit, so what really changed was the, the initial hearing body. Instead of the planning commission, it would be the administrative hearing officer, whose decision would be appealable to the planning commission. So I think there's a few instances like that where we kept uses conditional, but just felt like it could be done at essentially a lower-level hearing where the permit fee would be less, you can get to the hearing generally a little bit quicker because there's more flexible scheduling with administrative hearings. So I think that was the primary driver for that and a couple of the other changes in here that were being proposed to go to the administrative hearing officer.
Okay, so then also looking at the zoning districts, item six, late-evening activities which occur between 11:00 p.m. through 7:00 a.m., that would be a conditional use permit also at the admin level now instead of going to the planning commission. And I think some of these, people don't know what's happening, if it's an administrative decision, they aren't aware of those decisions being made, and they might not, the time might elapse where they don't, they haven't appealed, essentially. So, so I'm, yeah, so I see, do see it, item four, eating establishments, full-service restaurants with bar facilities, and there's a hanging and there that might need to be removed, or maybe you do mean that, and B, any entertainment facilities, dancing, live music in association with full-service or fast-food self-service restaurant. And so now that's, now that's showing as permitted, what was it before?
Excuse me, it was a conditional use.
It was a conditional use, and who had that authority?
Planning commission.
Planning commission, okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Chow?
So for the specialty store, the language is, it include the list of following in the resolution, so anything that's not mentioned, are they then not specialties, specialized schools, sorry, the specialized school, the language says examples include the following. It doesn't say, shouldn't it, examples include the following, but not, it's not only the following, something like that. If any, this is not an exhaustive list.
Not at all, it's not, precisely.
But the language sounds like it's an exhaustive list. Anything not mentioned is not specialized school.
If, if part of the motion you would like to clarify that language, we weren't happy to add that as well. But no, you're right, it's not, it's not intended to be an exhaustive list.
Yeah, I think, I think the language clearly states that the list is, are, they're examples. The underlying definition is specialized school means a private academic educational institution providing specialized education slash training.
So examples imply it's not exhaustive.
Yeah, that's how I interpret the provision.
Thank you for clarifying that. And then for the retail business, it used to say excluding convenience market, but now convenience market is included in the definition for food stores. So that means convenience market would be permitted use for retail, right? So why did we exclude convenience market earlier?
So if I can make a comment on row, are you referring to row one, where the, there's a red line through excluding convenience markets? I would make a suggestion to the council that we, that we actually undo that edit right there and leave in excluding convenience markets as part of that row, as the planning commission had recommended keeping that as a CUP PC item. So if during the motion, that could be part of your motion is, you know...
But even that, I don't understand why did we exclude the convenience store? What was...
Sure, because food stores are allowed by right, you know, that includes specialty food stores as well as grocery stores, but convenience markets are continuing to be looked at as a, or approved with a CUP PC.
I think there was some concern that they're different in the sense that they tend to focus on late-night hours and may have higher liquor sales or things like that, which is the reason to keep that a conditional use that would go to the planning commission, unlike the other items in number one that are permitted uses.
I see. So yeah, usually if something that could have late-night hours, I think do people do want to have a PC, but how, how far here, late-evening activities, and we are changing that from PC to admin, then that seems to be counter to what you had just said. People tend to want the approval from planning commission.
Well, for convenience stores, it would be a planning commission, but other late-night uses, which are currently planning commission, would then go to an administrative hearing if this were adopted.
So why are you... Yeah, it seems you just recommended that's, on the convenience store tend to have late night hours, so, so planning commission approval is appropriate. And then with the same logic, then it seems other late-evening activities should remain at planning commission approval, right?
So, you know, in terms of the planning commission's thought process, and again, we do have the chair here to explain as well, but in terms of the thought process for convenience markets, not necessarily that they are open late nights, it's more of a perception, general perception with, you know, neighboring residents. For example, the 7-Eleven along Bub Road, you know, that attracts young kids.
Because they are 24-hour store.
If I may, I think, I think also too, the convenience store also allows for liquor sales, so that is a different kind of activity combined with the late-night hours. We're thinking of late-night hours activities or something separate. That's why convenience store, the reasoning for that being continuing as CUP PC is because of combination of liquor store.
Yeah, but the staff recommendation also, there was, I remember, a liquor store sale would also be changed from PC to admin approval.
No, I believe liquor stores are still maintained PC, CUP.
Let me find it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Fruen?
So I just wanted to get clarity on precisely what change you think we need to make in the language in order to adopt the actual recommendation from the planning commission with respect to convenience markets.
So if you look at row one of table 1960030, basically undoing that red line and keeping it there, which is consistent with what's currently in the ordinance.
Just to clarify, just leave it as food stores?
Correct. So what this is saying, that food stores are allowed by right with the exception of a convenience market, which is a subcategory of food store.
Which, which is going to be CUP PC, so that's, that's a minor error that we had struck out.
So I believe the only, only change to the staff recommendation that's, that's being requested is to omit the deletion of excluding convenience markets from 1960031A.
Okay. Okay, if, Councilmember Moore?
Okay, so...
Five minutes, please.
Thank you. Still looking at the same table, 1960.030. Item three, you're showing farmer's market. If I heard correctly, farmer's market would be on commercial properties, so this, so this is something new where you're saying it's an admin approval. So you're saying that you could have, at the United Furniture Parking Lot, staff would approve whether or not a farmer's market would go there as opposed to the council?
Clarify, when it says CUP admin, it's still a public hearing process, it's just that it's versus a CUP PC, still a public hearing process, same noticing, it is just the hearing body is different, it's not approval by the staff at the staff level, it's still a public hearing process.
Okay, but it's not going to be going to the planning commission or to the city council?
If it's appealed, yes, there it is.
Okay. And previously, with regards to our farmer's market, that was something that was discussed by the city council about, about that. Okay. Then moving along, with regards to, it's on page 705, or 706 of 780, under zoning districts 16, it starts with pet shops. First, you talk about them being in soundproof areas, but then it moves on to uses which are not located in soundproof structures. That would be an administrative decision, and again, I'm concerned about that because that can be very loud, lots of barking, and I think it's something that the public would want to be alerted to if that's going in next door to them. And also, you've got a section on the display of merchandise under 31. I'm concerned about that for what the appearance of this is going to look like. And all of that appears to be done at the admin level or permitted.
I too had a quick question on the display of merchandise. Are we talking about the merchandise going in, in front of the store, outside the store, like the sidewalk?
Yes, so let's do a couple of examples here. So it's permitted for stores that are 20,000 square feet or more. So Home Depot, as you know, you drive down Deans, of course, that Home Depot is San Jose, but if there was a Home Depot in Cupertino, you know, their display of merchandise where you have like tough sheds or some tools and whatnot would be permitted by right, whereas, you know, let's say a smaller Ace Hardware Store, if they want to do, those are typically under 20,000 square feet, you know, their display of merchandise would be CUP admin rather than a planning commission. You know, and again, this standard was pulled from the following section, this wasn't even in our table before. Pretty much, staff placed it into this table and just lowered the approval level one, one step.
Okay, I'm almost out of time, but if you could quickly summarize the difference between an admin hearing versus a planning commission meeting?
Sure.
What does it say, and what are the advantages of one or the other?
Sure, so planning commission hearings are scheduled twice a month, the second and fourth Tuesdays at 6:45 in these chambers, whereas admin hearings typically are done on any Thursday, if there are items, at 5:00 p.m. within City Hall, I believe, or at Quinlan, I think they're at City Hall now.
Yeah, they are at City Hall, and if I could just add, there's probably about half a dozen admin hearings per year.
Yeah.
So they're pretty infrequent. Sometimes there could be two in a month if we have items, because like I'd said, we can schedule things more quickly because they happen on a Thursday, but we schedule them when we have items. There's also gaps of several months where there aren't any admin hearings, so it's not like these are frequent, there's generally no more than two items at an admin hearing, but they have the same noticing requirements with the exception that they're not published in a newspaper, but the same mailed notices go out. They're held at 5:00 p.m. on Thursdays at City Hall, and all items would be appealable to the planning commission if somebody wanted to elevate that decision to a higher level.
If I can add one more difference in terms of the cost of the use permit, so a use permit at the admin level is about $10,700, where a use permit, depending on whether it's below 10,000 or above 10,000 square feet, is $25,000 to $39,000.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go to public comments on, on this public hearing, which is item number 11. Are there any...
Yes, Mayor, I have three requests to speak from Community Hall, and I see one hand raised virtually requesting to speak.
Okay.
Jennifer Griffin, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by David Fung. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I did attend this planning commission meeting. It was quite interesting and varied. My first comment is I'm glad that we're talking about the farmer's market since there had been so much confusion about that and discussion. I, I think that the city needs to proceed very carefully with the farmer's market description because there's been a lot of conflict about where they're placed on the city. I've seen a lot of people in here that were upset about it, so I appreciate the staff trying to negotiate what we're doing with farmer's market. The main issue I have with promoting items that the planning commission used to give approval for or have hearings on to a staff administrative hearing, and I have been, believe me, in the 24 years I've been to many of these administrative hearings, and I understand that there is a cost factor. I think they said 10,000 versus 40,000. I think they said 10,000 versus 40,000 at the Planning Commission. But I feel like we canceled the Planning Commission, I think last week, and we're just like making, like, no, like, why do we even have a Planning Commission? And I don't want to go there. I appreciate the staff being able to make responsible decisions, but believe me, in the history of this city, if you're, most of the discussions that the public have been involved in these council chambers included bars, dancing, late-night noise. We had the Blue Pheasant discussion went on for weeks about, that was a dancing establishment. I actually used to go there in my younger days, and that was a great source of consternation for the neighbors, the vendor, of course, it's a very popular, Blue Pheasant is a great venue, but they had to set up, I think it's 1:00 AM now, or it used to be 2:00. And then noises going on at night involves the public. I appreciate the staff trying to make those decisions, but I have heard countless arguments and meetings in here concerning those. So I don't think that the eating places with bars, late evening hours, should be decided at the administrative level. We're just going to get ourselves into a point where people start complaining they can't come at 5:00 on a Thursday. And I just really don't think that we need to be taking away any more things from the Planning Commission. That's why we have a Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by David Fung. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Councilmembers and staff. Along the same lines as Jennifer Griffin, I do not think that late-night activities between 11:00 AM and 7:00 AM should be administrative. Also, Farmer's Market, I don't think should be administrative because there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of food debris oftentimes. I love Farmer's Market, but I think that the public, in the right situation, they should have input. And also, the outside dog barking, it can, we've had pets, it can get really, really loud if you've got something barking all day and all night. And the concern about, I didn't understand being able to take away the 20% outside seating. I'm concerned about not having a restaurant taking all the sidewalk so that people can't walk. I'm thinking Panera has it cut off, so there is a walkway, but is there any provision to at least have a path if a restaurant chooses to put a lot of tables out? So, late night, dancing and music also, I think, should be a Planning Commission issue, and the dog barking. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have David Fung. Welcome, David.
Mayor Mohan and Council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is David Fung, I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. As a normal procedure, we will attend council meetings where there were items that had come before the Planning Commission. To answer any questions you may have, I'm happy to do that. I did want to just touch, I have almost nothing to say because we were very lucky. John and Luke did a great job preparing this item for the Planning Commission, and they've actually touched on most of the items that I had noted. But let me just mention a few things here. In the original draft that we received at the Planning Commission, there was a, the definition of a Farmer's Market kind of included some text to the, in the general direction of that at least 25%, well, no more than 25% of the business would be non-food or agricultural-related. And so I think that the Planning Commission in general felt that seemed like a kind of an arbitrary number. That was something that was just put in to make sure that it was mostly, you know, the supermajority of the op businesses there were agriculture-related. But we did ask to look at what are the standards in California that allow something to be approved as a Farmer's Market and, you know, not have it turn into, you know, insurance thing, or actually, we actually did have a discussion around the related topic of flea markets. There aren't really a lot of call for flea markets because there's a very large one on the Deans campus, and that's something that's not addressed in these changes. But a little bit, you know, a little bit of the flavor here really was how to bring this into compliance as much as possible with what the state laws, how they define a Farmer's Market. Another area was around conditional use continuing for convenience stores, and that was because these are more likely to be extended hours and more likely to be adjacent to residences. So it's very, very clear, and that's been touched on here. There was some discussion about the costs of PC hearings, Planning Commission hearings. I've been, I've talked to some of the applicants after some of our applications, for instance, a Starbucks that's by the post office, and they have commented, you know, that the cost of having this hearing is quite high. Now, in their particular case, because what they were coming for was early opening hours, you know, starting at 5:00 in the morning or 6:00 in the morning, they would actually still be coming back, I believe, under this current plan. And I also just wanted to say, and this was well-covered, administrative hearings are open to the public, their topics are noticed, and appeals would come to the Planning Commission or back to you. If there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. And if not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. And we have one member of the public requesting to speak virtually, that is San R. Welcome, San.
Evening, Mayor Mohan and Councilmembers. I attended the Planning Commission session on this as well, and I had some feedback that I want to reinforce here. It was not clear to me why the cost for a use permit would be higher than the cost for this, why the CUP is higher than this new form of permit, and why we could not reduce the cost and just offset the cost for these categories while still making sure the approvals go through the Planning Commission, and that way the public's role is not diminished and the commissioner's role is not diminished. I'm particularly concerned about the late-night facilities having administrative hearings. I don't believe we should do that. I'm also concerned about specialty food stores and fast food no longer having conditional use permits. What is the implication of that and what kind of change in conditions might occur as a result of the public not having input on some of these things? I think it's really important to not reduce transparency and not reduce the engagement of our stakeholders, which is the public. We have already seen the chaos that has resulted from not having hearings at the Planning Commission for things that the residents need to hear about, and we've seen that in a variety of cases, we won't go into that now. But I'd like to ask why we couldn't just offset the cost by reducing cost on this particular set of categories instead of making all of these changes, you know? Keep the approvals with Planning Commission and just top the cost. And finally, regardless of that, I think we should not be taking out late-evening facilities or late-evening activities from the use permit that goes to Planning Commission. I think any late-evening activity needs to be added at the highest bar, and there's no reason to give them any sort of exemptions. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Okay. All right, seeing no other public comments, let's bring it back to Council. Let's start off with a motion, just for discussion purposes, and if we could get a motion to adopt this, or adopt the staff recommendation plus what's been suggested as an amendment. Councilmember Fruen, Vice Mayor Fruen?
So I will move the staff recommended action, omitting the deletion of the expression, quote, excluding convenience markets, unquote, in table 19.60.030 at point 1A.
Is there a second? I will second it. Okay, so if there, let's go for, with discussions. Councilmember Chow, you have five minutes to make your comments.
I have more questions. So I think one public member asked why the cost of Planning Commission hearing is so much higher. Is it because of the video recording?
I can take that, Chow. So typically, with the Planning Commission, you're looking at Planning Commission's time, you're looking at the rental of the facility, you're looking at also more publication, and there's more agencies involved. So typically, the difference between Planning Commission and admin service, not admin service, admin staff meeting, there's a huge difference in cost. And I just wanted to make sure that Council understands that we're not doing this because we feel like this is under Council's instruction to promote retail along our city and also trying to incentivize businesses.
I have limited time, and I would like to understand more in terms of the cost. I'll try to clarify that later. And the outdoor seating, so no cap, that means some store could have 5%? And then 95% outdoor seating, how then it could be occupying a lot of the outdoor space?
Sure, you know, the other part of that standard is that it still has to meet the parking regulations as well, 19124. So it's not like, you know, the subway can have 500 seats outside, it still has to meet, you know, the parking availability for the shopping center.
But it still has to be the, it's on the, the area that's owned by the store, right?
Correct, correct.
But that means whoever owns the building get to rent that outdoor space?
That's a private issue between the.
Because a lot of this approval is based on, here is a public open space, how much space? But now they would be able to occupy the public open space by a lot of tables and chairs.
Well, it's typically, it would be within the shopping center, so it's private space, you know? So it's.
Not exactly, I think Volco has a lot of public open space.
Councilmember Chow, so also too, is any sort of outdoor arrangement will also have to meet ADA and accessible requirements, will also require a building permit, so we'll review all that, make sure it's permissible, they can't just cover the sidewalk with all the tables and chairs.
Any changes to the site would require a permit, whether it be a building permit or a tenant improvement, so all of this would get looked at, whether it's conditional or not. And it doesn't seem terribly realistic that a restaurant would have 5% and 95% outside, just, it's really tied to the parking standards. And in terms of, I know one speaker had raised the issue, as Ben just said, you cannot block access. I mean, you have access requirements through American with Disabilities Act and other things, so they can be maintained.
Yeah, another question is, I think we, some of our commercial site is right next to neighborhood, and that the new three sites that's going to be turning three commercial sites into residential only, and likely those residential homes will be right next to potentially an outdoors restaurant with music going into the night. So, any restriction on music or light for this kind of outdoor seating?
So, as recommended by Planning Commission, you know, entertainment within eating facilities is permitted, however, it's within the Council's discretion to add a, add some type of approval mechanism to entertainment facilities if so desired.
And any, do we have any restriction right now in terms of lights that's outdoor?
Well, we have the dark sky ordinance, we have other lighting ordinances as well that, you know, that limit, you know, glare onto neighboring properties.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
So when this went to the Planning Commission, it was a 3-2 vote. I would like to see what the two had to say about various of these items. Did you have a section in here where you're showing what portions of this they took issue with?
The minutes would reflect their dissent on some of the items. Specifically, one of the items that was dissented by the two Planning Commissioners was the fact that a lot of the PC-CUP, CUP-PCs were dropped down to CUP admins, as expressed by many, a few members of the public that came and spoke. So, I mean, essentially, that was really the crux of their dissent was the, as they saw, the transparency of the approval bodies.
Right, and that's, those are really the same issues that I'm having as well. I couldn't find the meeting minutes, I don't believe they've approved them yet. I think this only went to the Planning Commission a couple weeks ago?
September 10th, I believe.
Right, right, so I don't think that they've had a chance to approve the meeting minutes on that. Overall, I would say that I would have preferred this came to us as a study session rather than a fully baked ordinance change. And I do agree with members of the public that are talking about taking away the public input at the public hearings and being concerned about that. And I think it truly is important that we continue to have public input. There are portions of this ordinance which I agree with, and they're great additions, but there are others where you are changing the approval body, and I take issue with that.
Can I ask a quick question? The admin hearing is also publicly noticed, as you just mentioned?
Correct.
Is there a degree of transparency that we lose with admin hearing versus a public commission, I mean, Planning Commission?
I would say no, I mean, there's still, you know, 14-day appeal period, and, you know, in fact, it potentially can go through three levels of public process instead of two, you know, if those items are appealed.
So Mayor, if I may, so the transparency factor is still there. Whether or not it's administrative hearing or the Planning Commission hearing, the same notice requirement and the neighbor's notice will be the same. We're doing this in an effort trying to expedite the process and also loosen the burden on the business to be able to have a business in Cupertino. Again, this is following Council's direction to make sure that in the wake of COVID-19, post-COVID, how can we retain our existing retail and also attract new business in town? By, I wouldn't even necessarily say lowering the public hearing process, I think we're trying to provide additional opportunity for more business to be able to have their establishment in the city. However, if the City Council believes that Planning Commission should be the right decision-making body, we're more than happy to take that change as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go to Councilmember Chow.
I think I have one minute left. So, this is from the staff reports, I want to just clarify. So you are, this staff recommendation does recommend changing from Planning Commission to admin hearing for eating establishment with separate bar and late evening and pet shops. So these are all going to, pet shops that do not have soundproof. And also permitted use, well, that were previously conditional, that means this use won't have any public hearing. Or admin hearing is entertainment facility and dancing life music, right? So those, and also outdoor seating will be permitted without any admin hearing, right? That's the staff recommendation?
Correct, correct.
I want to confirm that. And since the cost is so different, I assume the notification is a lot different. If they are the same, the cost won't be so different, and the public opportunity to speak is also dramatically different. Thank you.
Senator Mayor, if I may, that is not correct.
Can you clarify that?
Yes, of course. So for a Planning Commission, typically, we prepare a Planning Commission staff report, and then we'll go through John's time, Luke's time, Ben's time, and other admin support's time, and go through the Planning Commission's time. We put up a hearing, and there are a lot more staff involved versus just having the administrative hearing. That's the cost difference.
If I could add through the mayor as well, the fees that I quoted, the 10,000, the 20-some-odd thousand, and almost 40,000, that didn't factor in a separate fee, which is our noticing fee. So we have a noticing fee of 400-plus dollars, which is even for all applications, even including, you know, a design review for a two-story home, as an example. So that fee was not included in that, in what I had said earlier. So essentially, that separate fee will cover the same noticing for all those applications.
Did you, were you going to make a comment?
A short follow-up. So, that means that in the admin hearing, there won't be staff report, there won't be a report that really clearly inform the public about what's actually changed.
If I could answer that-
Understand the difference.
There is a staff report. It tends to be briefer, but it follows the same format. There's an agenda that follows the same format you would see at a city council or planning commission meeting. There's a resolution as well. The appeal period is still 14 days, so it's very similar. It's just not as frequent, and there's more flexibility in when it's scheduled. It's at 5:00 PM instead of 6:45. But it is a noticed hearing, and the attendance levels sometimes aren't that different than what I see at the planning commission.
As you know, our permit fees are cost recovery, for cost recovery purposes. So what C.M. Andrew was indicating is that to put together to show for a planning commission required a lot more staff, back office staff, IT, video team versus admin hearing, there's less staff involved. That's why the fee also is a little bit more to cover the staff time as well.
I just wanted to make a comment. I know there's a cost savings between the admin hearing versus the planning commission. But, but isn't the reason we're doing this because we also want to streamline processes as we go along? And, you know, this hopefully is a once-a-year activity that we'll, we'll see from staff? Isn't that what we're all talking about, to streamline our processes, which, you know, which are cumbersome? There's, we all have to admit that. And, and this would be a way of reducing that cumbersome nature.
That's, that's correct, Mayor. And also too, as member Luke was mentioning, about the flexibility that admin hearing is just more of it than a planning commission. So, so that is in a way also, to your point, streamlining the project and process.
And one more thing to add to that, too. You know, when we look at these ordinances, you know, this was, you know, a number of months, we surveyed neighboring cities as well, and found that in many cases, we were overly restricted compared to cities like Sunnyvale and Mountain View, even Palo Alto, and how we, as an example, approve restaurants with ancillary bar facilities and whatnot. And so if you're a restaurant, you know, a small restaurant, family-owned restaurant, and you want to operate in this area, and you're choosing between Sunnyvale and Cupertino, what are you going to look at? The faster process, the cheaper process, and whatnot. So, I'm not saying it's a competition between the cities, but in many ways, you know, if we're trying to recruit businesses, good businesses in this community, you know, we like to be as attractive as possible. And I believe that's, that's the intent of much of what the city manager has said about, you know, cost recovery past, not cost recovery, excuse me, you know, retaining an attractive business post-COVID and whatnot.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Going back to the pet issue, item 16, so would that also include using those facilities for dog training and that sort of thing? My concern there is going back to the location in a place that's not soundproofed, because I can, I can see the neighbors having, taking issue with that. It can get, you know, we've already said it, it can get really loud. And it is something that I think does rise to the occasion, where you would want the planning commission to weigh in on it. I don't understand why we would actually be allowing a non-soundproofed pet facility at all. Was that something you considered?
Sure. So just the first part of your question, you know, one of the things we didn't have, we didn't have, the city didn't have originally in this ordinance was, the municipal code was a definition of pet daycare facility. So we added that, amended the title. And if I could just read that, it means any premises where animals are trained, exercised, and socialized but not kept or boarded overnight, bred, sold, or let for hire, the hours of operation shall be limited from 7:00 AM to set at 9:00 PM.
To 9:00 PM, okay.
So, yeah.
Okay. And you had another section regarding the entertainment. What does this mean exactly? Item 6, late evening activities which occur between 11:00 PM through 7:00 AM. And I see that it's a CUP admin, but who, that would be for the commercial zoning. So what kind of activities does that, are you referring to?
So, the planning commission chair brought one example, Starbucks opening at 5:00 AM. You know, with the current ordinance, they would have to come to the planning commission, pay $25,000 to just, just open two hours earlier and whatnot.
Okay. But more specifically, what are the definition, what's the definition of late evening activities? Does that mean music? Does it mean trucks can come through there?
It's any operation of a business between 11:00 and 7:00. So it's very broad.
So yes, it could be-
That's open to the public.
Music playing, trucks coming in, doing deliveries all night?
If I may, I think these are requests to get a use permit for planning staff to review, and Luke or John, correct me if I'm wrong, there are criteria and findings to approve a use permit. So certain uses that are offensive to the neighborhood or to neighboring properties will not be subject to, will not be allowed to happen. So these are within the confine of if these are applicable to the findings that could be approved by the use permit.
Yeah, that is correct. And I think also with things like noise, you have a citywide noise ordinance. So any business, whether it's conditional or not, is subject to the noise ordinance, just like light and glare. But the late evening activities is really meaning any commercial business that's open. You could be a grocery store that's open 24 hours. You could be a Starbucks that opens at 5:00 in the morning. Or you could be a business that closes at midnight or 1:00 in the morning. It's once you exceed those hours, 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, you need a use permit. And typically, that would, well, currently, that would be going to the planning commission. Now it would be an administrative hearing if this were changed. That's really the difference.
Okay. And going back to 4B, any entertainment facilities, dancing live music in association with full-service or fast-food self-service restaurant, that's permitted now, that is going to be subject to the noise ordinance?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So that could actually be pretty restrictive for them. Are you able to pull up what the noise ordinance is for an entertainment facility as opposed to a house?
I don't have it in front of me. Chapter, I have to go to chapter 10, but it's not separated by use classes. It was just very general. So, you know, late night, evening hours, adjacent to residential property, I believe it's 55 decibels at the property line. So it's pretty restrictive.
Right, okay.
So whether it's music or machinery, anything. I mean, it's really just the noise level, obviously more sensitive later at night because the ambient noise is quieter. So, but it's really, it's not looking whether it's music or a truck backing up, it's just noise. So it would be subject to that if the music were occurring in late hours where it could appear more loud.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other comments by council. So we have a motion to approve with this slight change, and we have a second. So let's vote by lights.
The amended motion carries with Wei absent and Chow voting no.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Should we take a small break? Okay, let's take a 10-minute break, please, before we come back. Resume our council meeting. Item number 12. This is about the city-owned automated license plate readers and awarding a contract of, to Flock Safety for an amount not to exceed $300,000. There's some recommended actions, and I see staff all poised for their staff report. And so we'll go directly to the staff.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Tina Kapoor, interim assistant city manager, and I'm here to introduce tonight's item, which is the city-owned automated license plate reader program. And tonight's presenters are our emergency manager, Tom Chin, and representative from sheriff's office, Jeremy Jones, Lieutenant Jeremy Jones. Thank you for being here. We work very closely with the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office, and this is another program that we partnered with, with them on. You have the staff report, you have the supplemental report. And I will, with that, turn it over to Tom and Lieutenant. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. And thank you, Mayor Mohan, Vice Mayor Furin, and city council members. I'm pleased to present to you the city-owned automated license plate reader program. Let's try it again. Good evening, Mayor Mohan, Vice Mayor Furin, and city council members. I'm pleased to present to you the city-owned automated license plate reader program. Tonight, we'll go over our recommended action, the background on ALPR technology, policy development process, and community input. I'll review the key documents, and then we'll look at the proposed locations. For you on the screen, we have the recommended actions that include adopting a resolution to establish the ALPR program, authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an MOU with the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office, and finally authorize an agreement with Flock Safety for leasing the ALPR devices. Now, a little background on ALPR technology. The automated license, ALPR technology uses a combination of cameras and computer software to scan the license plates of passing vehicles. The cameras can be mounted on fixed poles. They capture computer-readable images that allow law enforcement to compare plate numbers against plates of known stolen vehicles or vehicles associated with missing persons or an active investigation. When the system matches a license plate, law enforcement receives an alert with the location where the image of the vehicle with the matching plate was captured. A deputy in this case will then verify if the image was captured accurately and make that human determination for that accuracy. As a part of the active investigation, detectives can also use an ALPR data after a crime has been committed to identify and locate associated vehicles. As part of the policy development and community input process, staff conducted an in-depth examination of state legislation, privacy issues, regulatory standards for ALPR, associated installation costs, and successful practices from comparable municipalities. Recently, or recently, in January 2024, the county of Santa Clara and the sheriff's office adjusted their ALPR technology, or policy, excuse me, permitting data exchange across policing agencies. Our enactment of this policy was delayed due to the review of those documents to ensure our, our agreement with the amendments. Staff assessed the policies from the various jurisdictions and then gathered feedback from our officials and residents. As part of community input, in March 2023, we presented a preliminary assessment of the ALPR system and program to the TIC Commission and the Public Safety Commission to garner input from the commissioners themselves and community members regarding the technology applications, potential placement, and potential privacy implications. The revised policy was then presented to the Public Safety Commission in September 2024 and received a unanimous recommendation. As far as the key documents you're looking at, the proposed ALPR policy outlines the regulations and guidelines for deploying ALPR systems within Cupertino. It applies to ALPR devices that are owned or leased by the city and installed on municipal infrastructure, though it explicitly allows data from privately-owned devices to be incorporated. The draft MOU establishes the relationship between the city, oops, between the city and the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office, and governs the relationship on the use of ALPR system within the city, clarifying our duties and expectations between the city and the county concerning those devices. This MOU includes data handling, security, and maintenance. And finally, the MOU requires the implementation of all best practices and legal requirements. Regarding the agreement with Flock Safety, Flock Safety is the only ALPR system that is currently approved by the county of Santa Clara and the sheriff's office as it conforms to the county surveillance use policy. Several nearby cities deployed ALPR systems recently in partnership with Flock, including the town of Los Altos Hills, the city of Saratoga, the town of Los Gatos, the city of Palo Alto, and the city of San Jose. The town of Los Altos Hills conducted an informal solicitation back in 2021 and determined that Flock Safety was the best value to the jurisdiction. And finally, the proposed locations were considered based upon the locations of cameras either installed now or on future phases from the other cities. The proposed locations for ALPR cameras are visible on the map and listed to the right. In consultation with the sheriff's office, the staff proposed 15 camera locations that serve as entry points into the city or on major arterial roads that maximize the effectiveness of the ALPR system. And I'll return now to the recommended action that, again, includes adopting a resolution to establishing the ALPR policy, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an MOU with the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office, and authorizing an agreement with Flock Safety for leasing ALPR cameras. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Tom. Council questions for the staff? Councilmember Chow, five minutes, please.
Hi, thank you for a very comprehensive report, staff report, and thank you for answering all my questions on the supplemental. It's really great that, I think this started back in 2021 or 2022. Took a long time, but it's great to see it's coming to fruition, to completion. So, if we approve that, when will these cameras be deployed? The construction will complete in one year? Do we know yet? Yeah?
At this point, we will establish this policy. The Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office then has to go to the board of supervisors to approve their policy for Cupertino. But then we will negotiate, and concurrently, we'll negotiate an agreement with Flock Safety. I would estimate potentially December or early January for installation.
And how long would the installation take?
We should be complete by December.
Oh, complete, okay, that's great. And then, so this, I understand, will be installed on separate poles in these locations? Or are they going to be on the existing traffic signal poles?
Forgive me.
You can just answer. This is my time, so.
That's right. For the ideal placement would be on city light poles rather than traffic signals to preserve the continuity of the traffic signals. But we have identified locations that are likely to be served by light poles.
So it will be at the height of the current street light?
Not at the height, it'll be at a middle level. So it can angle and capture the license plate.
I'm just wondering, I suppose there hasn't been any kind of aesthetic concerns from residents for this kind of camera?
Not that I've heard of.
And then they will now take an image of, let's say, pedestrian walking by?
No, the system works on an alphanumeric algorithm and captures only the characters of the license plate and the shape of the vehicle's taillights and the body of the vehicle.
Okay, thank you. I reserve the rest of my time.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you for the report and for the pre-meeting that we got to have. I think it was really helpful. In that meeting, you explained a little bit about how a neighborhood could acquire one of these if they weren't in the original set. And I was wondering if you could add a little bit of that information here.
The city will contract with this vendor, assuming approval. And the residents are free to contract with the vendor themselves. In fact, there are existing six cameras without, within Cupertino on private property.
Okay, thank you.
Just piggybacking on that, I think your staff report said that even if it was on private property, the owners will not be able to access the information. It has to go through the sheriff's office.
That's right. The data is only accessible by law enforcement agencies. So even an owner or a lease- The data is only accessible by law enforcement agencies, so even an owner or a leasing of the camera on private property would not be able to look through or see any of the data.
And so what would trigger that? So the owner would have to have an incident and then complain, make a complaint?
I'll let Lieutenant Jones emphasize this, but in general, the alert is, the camera capture an image and measured against a known list, so either missing persons, vehicles of interest, or part of an investigation, and Lieutenant Jones can describe how that process works.
And Mayor, to add on that. And Mayor, thank you for having me, but to add on that, when the license plate is read and law enforcement only is able to have that access to the data such as where the vehicle is registered, if it comes back, if it's stolen, so if you are a private owner of this, you will only get the image of the vehicle, you will not get any of the sensitive information from DMV, that will only be through law enforcement. So if your car is stolen and it runs, the private owner wouldn't see that that car is stolen, they would just have the image of the license plate, the image that it passed through, but we will get the alert that that car is actually on the stolen list.
Okay, great, thank you, that explains it. Councilmember Chow?
So the original description in the work program states that this item would deploy city-owned license plate readers and implement policies to allow neighborhood-owned ones, but the current pass policy does not seem to include a policy on neighborhood-owned ones. Maybe it's not necessary, I'm just curious whether other cities have different policy that includes neighborhood-owned cameras?
The other city policies do not explicitly exclude neighborhood-owned ones, and in fact, our policy encourages or explicitly states that privately-owned data can be incorporated into our system.
Okay, great. And then I'm curious, so we are, the city is leasing the system, and then therefore the vendor will be responsible for maintenance and any equipment updates, but the cost will be about $3,000, rigor-curing cost, but it will be on the city property, so basically they are using the city property, are we leasing it to them for free in case we want to switch vendor later? Would, who would incur the cost of uninstalling this property that's owned by them on our property?
The city is requesting the vendor to install these devices on our behalf, so the vendor is not coming in and installing it on their own, and we would incur any costs that we would add on to that request. If we were to terminate our agreement early, we would likely incur some costs, but if we went, worked throughout the lifespan of the contract, there would be no cost for our move.
What's the length of the contract right now?
Our recommended, contract is in the recommended action, it's an initial three years with an option to extend for two.
Okay, thank you.
And just to encapsulate what Tom said, I believe that questions the councilmember Chow had asked earlier has been answered in the supplemental that went out at 5:00 today. No? So I thought the questions on the cost of the equipment, not the contract, right? So there were additional questions that were answered and that were issued in the supplemental today.
They were not received by the deadline, the questions.
Okay. Seeing no questions for staff, should we go to council, should we go to the public and come back?
Okay, I can do that.
All right. So are there any members of the public wishing to speak?
Yes, Mayor, I have three requests to speak in Community Hall, and I see no hands raised virtually.
Okay.
Okay, so we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Herve Marcy. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I'm really, really pleased to see this item come to fruition. I think that the crime rate in Cupertino has gotten worse in the last few years, and this type of technology is very, very successful in catching criminals very, very soon after the act of the crime. And I'm referring back to a holdup of an elderly couple at the intersection of Deans Boulevard and Prospect Road several years ago at a gas station, and this was right across the street from Saratoga, Cupertino, and West San Jose. I was appalled to learn that people were holding up elderly residents of Cupertino or any city, taking all of their personal belongings and then stealing the car. The car was found by the Los Altos Hills Police, I don't think it was Los Altos, I think it was Los Altos Hills Police, on 280 within, I think, an hour later. And to me, that is, that saves everyone the trouble of trying to track down where these people were going. I think these people had two different cars, I mean, I was just amazed that this, it was like something out of CSI, it was so cool. And I thought at this point, if we're going to have people being so brazen that they would be holding up an 80-year-old couple at a gas station at the, at the Monovista, I'm sorry, at the Saratoga end of town, they really obviously have nothing better to do, and we may as well catch them as soon as possible. It saves everybody time, so I'm very happy to see this going. To me, the cost is worth it, because you're going to have the residents of this city be able to sleep at night. As I mentioned before, I was in college with Bambi Larson, I know that gentleman did not own a car, but this is the type of level, when you have someone with a gun holding up an elderly couple trying to take their car, my mother-in-law right outside of her home two years ago, her neighbor, I have told several people about this, but her neighbor was forced out of his car at gunpoint, this is in West San Jose, at gunpoint, he laid down on the sidewalk, and they took all of his personal items and, I believe, his car. He has moved, he was not harmed, but this is how close it is to home, so please do this, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Herve Marcy. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. Kirsten, could you display Attachment D, the map, please? If that's allowed? I'm in favor of this. I had, I hope that there would be some discussion on how the locations were decided, but in looking at this, the one that comes out of the Apple spaceship, it seems like it should have been placed at the intersection of Homestead and Wolf, because then it would carry the other end of Homestead and also that shopping center that always gets robbed. And then if I look down Miller to the south towards Ballinger, there isn't anything there to catch them going out that way, so I would like you to consider those two locations. Thank you.
And next, we have Herve Marcy.
Mayor Mohan and councilmembers, my name is Herve Marcy, I'm the Chair of the Bike Pad Commission, but speaking in my name only. Cities often turn to license plate readers, thinking that they will protect their communities from crime, but the truth is, these cameras, which record license plates coming in and out of the city, create more problems than they solve. This will lead to innocent people becoming suspects because they happen to drive through a specific neighborhood. For some communities, this might mean hundreds of cars end up under suspicion. License plate readers, vendors operate under the assumption that surveillance will reduce crime by either making would-be criminals aware of the surveillance in hopes it will be a deterrent, or by using the technology to secure conviction of people that have allegedly committed crimes in the neighborhood. However, there is little empirical evidence that such surveillance reduces crime. ALPRs, so license plate readers, do however, present a host of other potential problems for people who live, work, or commute in surveilled areas. There are thousands of reasons why persons might be passing through a city, but driving through a neighborhood should not lead to suspicion. Like all machines, ALPRs make mistakes, and these mistakes can endanger people's lives and physical safety. For example, an ALPR might erroneously conclude that a passenger's car license plate matches the plate of a car on a hot list of stolen cars. This can need police to stop the car and detain the motorists. But this isn't a hypothetical scenario. For example, a false alert from an ALPR led police to stop a family, put guns at them, and forced them to lie on their bellies in a parking lot, including their children aged six and eight. The use of this technology raised several concerns, significant concerns. A state audit in Vermont found that 11% of ALPR searches violated state restrictions on when police can and can't look at the data. The data collected would also be prone to hacking by malicious actors who can literally get access to the comings and goings of an entire city. There is a simple way to prevent hacking, it's do not collect the data. Investing in this type of mass surveillance technology will do little to find criminals and open the doors to all sorts of abuse. I'm respectfully asking City Council to not invest in these automated license plate readers and invest more, invest more if we have enough funding. If we have the funding, then to invest more in community initiatives in cooperation with the Sheriff's Department instead. Thank you.
Thank you, Herve, and we have one member of the public requesting to speak virtually, that is San R. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Mohan and councilmembers. I would strongly support the ALPR funding, and I would request the city to please expedite approval for this ALPR. This is a long-requested item by members of the public. The cities of Saratoga and Los Altos have installed the Flock cameras, and they have really had benefits that have been seen, as was mentioned by one of the prior residents. I would also urge us to look at allowing for private cameras to be able to connect into the system. I believe there are policies for that in both Los Altos and Saratoga, and it'd be good for this ALPR policy to be further extended to support private ALPR integration into the network while maintaining privacy as well. And finally, I would also like you to consider, in addition to the camera locations that are listed, the location around Foothill and Stevens Creek, because people coming off inner neighborhoods can head up into the quarry area and leave the car, abandon the car, and then disappear. We've seen that happen since COVID multiple times, when the deputies have had to launch searches on the quarry hills because people abandon cars and then disappear into the hills. So it would be good to look at Foothill and Stevens Creek as a critical junction. There is also a southbound way for them to get out of the area using the Stevens Canyon Road that leads into Saratoga, so it would be good to see if we can cut off that point through cameras at McClellan and Stevens Canyon as well. Appreciate everything the city is doing to improve safety, safety, stop confinement for residents, and please approve this next right installation, thank you.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Okay. Yes, thank you to everyone who made comments on this issue, and now we'll bring it back to council for a motion, at least for deliberating purposes. Is there a motion to approve the staff report?
Move for the staff recommendation.
Are you making?
Move the staff recommendation, yeah.
All right, is there a second? More second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussions? Vice Mayor Frue?
So, point of clarification, Tom, in your presentation, you mentioned that there is always a human intermediary that is double-checking any license plate that has been flagged by the system? Okay.
Yes, we do. Vice Mayor, yeah, in our policy, we do have that, so any hit or hot list, deputies must visually confirm the license plate, so that means the deputy must get behind, and they must visually confirm that the license plate is what's red.
Okay, all right. And then what provision do we have for reviewing these policies in terms of what provision we're making for people's privacy and so forth over time?
The County of Santa Clara has audits that go into their system, checking to verify that a deputy or investigator has input and accurate information in the requirements, and then we have, the Board of Supervisors receives an annual report on the use of the ALPR systems, and the Sheriff's Office contributes to a, forgive me, weekly or bi-weekly introduction into transparency portal.
Okay, but they use the office of the county auditor in order to be able to make sure that things are in order?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Is there some way that we can receive the data back on how effective this has been within, you know, either six months from now or a year from now, that we get feedback about it? Not just that it's great that the county's getting it, but since we're paying for it, we should get a report back and have it include something about the data retention time? Is that possible? Could staff respond to that, anyone?
Yes, absolutely, it's written in the MOU that any reports that are provided to the, for the county, that the county develops any reports, that we get it, including any success stories and hits on the system.
And we'll have something specific to Cupertino?
It'll be specific to Cupertino, yes.
Okay, so we're going to look forward to this as an agenda item within the next year, I would think, having a report?
As far as a report to council?
Or we'll be receiving the report that the county is getting?
Yes.
Right, so that's also going to come to the City Council here, and do you have any idea what time of year that report comes out? Is it the end of the fiscal year and maybe like around now, they're getting something?
Is there a report that needs to be received by the council or just a report to staff, and we can share that information with the public and council as well?
At this point, it's a public report that we would, we already included in the staff report that we would post to the website.
Okay, great, and so it sounded like the Public Safety Forum is changing a little bit, but if there's some way maybe that that could be added in to, for people to know that we've had this change in the city, that might be beneficial as well?
Of course.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I saw the list of intersections where the 15 cameras will be installed. Is that subject to change? Will you be reviewing it every six months if there's another? Well, my first question is, since you've installed it, is it hard to uninstall it and install somewhere else?
The installation process will be governed by the agreement that we negotiate with the vendor. We would reevaluate the placement of the cameras and potentially recommend additional cameras, should the situation warrant.
The list that we saw in the staff report has been approved by the Sheriff's Office, right? And it is, it could change depending on the activity or?
Yes, it could change on an annual basis, or even before we install, we could make some slight adjustments based upon specific location needs as we go out to do the inspections.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Chow?
So, yeah, I have the same question. So they're installed on the pole, so could that be maybe a semi-stationary pole that could be relocated in case we find out we need to adjust it because of, a better location might be across the street, something like that? Are they just stationary? It's very hard, it would be very costly to relocate.
Once they're installed, there would be a minor fee if we wanted to relocate that specific camera, but again, I would recommend that we evaluate on a year, annual basis, and potentially recommend additional cameras.
And there will be a website where the camera locations posted? And there will be a website where the camera locations posted?
Not part of your attachment to the staff report?
We do have the?
I mean, website. It'll be posted to the website.
The staff report is posted to the website?
No, I mean, there will be a city webpage on this program, how a neighborhood can join. And then here are the current location of the cameras.
So there's pros and cons to that approach? And then the criminals will know where the cameras are?
Okay, that's true. Okay. And then I think, could you respond to Peggy's request of, I think, relocating of one of them and adding another one? I didn't really catch the location. Did you catch that?
I did. Council, I would recommend, again, we proceed with the proposed camera locations. These proposals have been made based upon entrances and exits to the city, as well as main arterial streets, in addition to the current installments from other cities, as well as next phase of installments from other cities.
Okay. It might be helpful to know what's the camera location that's in our surrounding cities. Because right now I see that Stevens Creek Canyon, Foothill, that one doesn't have a camera. And the Prospect Lawrence intersection doesn't have one. But maybe San Jose has one, I don't know. So if we can, we can have that information later, like where are the camera from Saratoga, Los Altos? That would be helpful.
We can certainly try that through the Sheriff's Office assistance. I'm not sure if there's an agreement already in place with Sound CPD and other police department with the Sheriff's Office, but we can certainly look into it.
Just locations, yeah. Okay. And then addressing Public's question, I think, but one commissioner, speaking on his own behalf, is concerned that the reader might catch innocent people. But you mentioned that only those those plate that's already in the system would be alerted, that would be alerted. So anyone that's not in the system would not get any alert, unless it's an ongoing case, right?
That's right.
But of course, there will always potential be false identification. So in case anyone gets identified, what's the process? They they will receive a, a police car will chase them down? How does that work?
So again, Lieutenant Jones has already answered that the, whenever there's a lit, a hit on an ALPR reading, deputy has to review the image and verify that that known plate is in fact what's been captured on the?
So there is a human verification?
There's a human intervention.
Okay, great.
And just and just to add to that, per our policy, we cannot take any law enforcement action based on a hit alone. So just a hit alone, there's no law enforcement action that can be taken. So we have to physically or visibly verify that license plate. And then we have to run it through our system to make sure that 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 license plate is still either a wanted person, a stolen vehicle, or has some kind of felony.
I have only less than one minute. So another question is, neighborhood wants to install one, but the cost of $3,000 is quite high for a lot of neighborhood. So Saratoga has this property tax assessment district that help pay for the cost. So how does that work? Is it possible Cupertino can consider that sometime in the future? I asked that, but then I have, I don't know if there is a supplemental report to read. If you can answer now, that would be great.
You know, I mean, that would be a potential future agenda item, given the scope and that that it would, you know, likely involve, you know, a approval of of the affected property owners by, you know, by boat. It would, the scope of it would probably be appropriate for a work program item.
So a neighborhood together can say we want to have an assessment district?
Yes, but yeah.
Maybe you can have, I'll ask you offline?
Okay.
To get more detail. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, I think it's time to vote. The recommended action is to adopt the staff report, items one, two, and three. Madam City Clerk, do you need to read it out or are we okay?
No, Mayor.
Okay, great. Let's go ahead and vote, please.
The motion carries unanimously with way absent.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Sheriff. What's that? Yes, Lieutenant Jones. Okay, we are done with most of it. And City Manager Report, is there a City Manager Report?
Yes, Mayor. Video, can you go ahead and play? Thank you.
Thank you. That was fun. And this meeting is now adjourned.
Mayor?
Excuse me, sorry.
So future agenda item?
Ah, did we miss that? All right. Okay, so the meeting is not adjourned as yet.
But, but I?
Go ahead with the future agenda.
So it's really an infomemo request that I second thought, I thought maybe it's better to get an infomemo on the property tax assessment district. That's possibly for the license plate reader. No timeframe, just so that we have some idea. And then in case we might request a work program item, we should have some information about that first.
Of course. Just to clarify, I'm tracking a total of six infomemo from tonight. There's an infomemo from Councilmember Chow on the loss of retail and sales tax with the three pending SB 330 project. Councilmember Chow asked for information on councilmembers absent for more than 60 days. Councilmember Moore asking about information on current city's electricity bill. Councilmember Chow asking for the cost difference between Planning Commission admin hearing, sorry, that was through an email, and also a parking Luffy request from Councilmember Chow earlier through an email. And then the assessment on lighting district. So I'm tracking a number of six. Does that sound right? Thank you.
Sounds good. I I thought we got an answer on the cost between admin hearing and planning commission. We did get that information from staff?
Yeah, it wasn't an infomemo request, it was an email because I still have some questions. So it's okay, just respond by email.
Respond by email?
So no infomemo?
Wasn't really a?
No infomemo?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, just respond through email is fine.
Okay, no memo. Okay. Oh, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, with regards to the electricity, I'm, I would want to know, not not just the cost, but how many kilowatt hours we're using and what we're hoping from the solar panels that we're going to be generating. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are we finally done? Okay, so this meeting is now adjourned.